Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 14th, will come to order. Let the record show that Commissioners Clark and Cabe are absent and excused. All others are present and accounted for. Are there any non-agenda public comments, seeing as that we do have members of the public in the room today? Seeing, hearing none. We have no minutes to approve this evening. Bruce, just talking with our secretary, it's been quite a while since we've had minutes to approve, so I just wanted to ask if you could, next week, come back with just a status of that. I went through my records, it's probably been at least three or four months, so just wanted to check on that.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I just recently reviewed about four sets.
Okay.
So I think that in the coming months, you're going to get more than you want.
Okay, good, good, all right. That doesn't surprise me. New business, we really have no new business, but just, I thought I'd include in that part of our agenda, just a reminder also to you, Bruce, that in last week's meeting, we asked staff for a timeline for us, for the remainder of the steps that need to be taken for the plan review. That was not to come back this evening, but hopefully within the next, either next week's meeting or the week after, that at least by the end of this month, we have a real clear timeline as to what we need to do to get all the subareas reviewed, as well as any other plan elements done and approved.
Yes, indeed. In fact, I believe that is scheduled for the January 28th meeting right now.
Great, great, thank you. So with that said, we move into our continuation of our public hearing, and we do have members of the public here this evening. Thank you very much for coming, and again, those listening or watching on television. We have three subareas that we'll be reviewing this evening. Bothell has 17 subareas, of which three are under review this evening. One is a second review. This is the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, SR 527 corridor subarea plan, and then the agenda, Bruce, says a second review of the Fitzgerald, but your memo says initial, so I think this is actually the initial review.
It is the initial, yes.
Yeah. So an initial review of the Fitzgerald 35th Southeast subarea plan, and then an initial review of the Canyon Creek 39th Southeast subarea plan. A comment that we've given several times in the past is that we recognize that there are some specific parcel requests, and we're open to reviewing them as part of the plan process, and if we can in a timely manner review them and make a motion to them, we will. But at the same time, if that, if they need to move on a parallel or separate time track, separate from what we're doing with the strategic plan review, we need to do that. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that for you this evening.
Yes, indeed.
So at this point, in continuing the public hearing, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you for whatever type of talk or presentation you'd have for us. We have the material in front of us. I believe we've all reviewed it, but look forward to your comments.
Yeah, I'm just going to do a real brief presentation on this. As you have identified, this is a public hearing regarding three subareas: the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, SR 527 corridor, the Canyon Creek 39th Southeast, and the Fitzgerald 35th Southeast subarea plans. And of course, those are located within the city, basically highlighted here. Here's Canyon Creek, here's Fitzgerald, and here's Country Village, Lake Pleasant, 527 corridor. Now, one of the things that's important about subarea plans is this is kind of where we put all of our eggs, if you would, our land use designations, which become zoning classifications, as well as we identify any specific appearance or design standards we want to have within these subareas. There are a lot of subareas that have some very unique features. In fact, the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, has the Red Barn Special District. Some of the other areas have some similar things, and that's basically where the subarea plans come into play, is that's where you'll find those special provisions. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, 527 corridor/Bothel-Everett Highway subarea plan. And the Planning Commission already connected an initial review in December, and this is its second review for this, basically this subarea. And of course, the focus of tonight's meeting will be for the Planning Commission to complete its review and formulate a recommendation regarding a city-sponsored plan and code amendment for the Country Village, Shopping Center, and surrounding lands, as well as an amendment request by Mr. and Mrs. Jorgensen, who own property on 724 232nd Street Southeast. Finally, one of the things we didn't talk about in our initial meeting was that we're going to have to come up with a new name for this subarea plan, because the 527 no longer exists in this area. It's no longer a state sign route. It is now a Bothell public right-of-way. It does not become 527 until we're north of 405. So we're going to have to come up with a new name. One of the tricky things is, of course, when you get to the Snohomish County, King County boundary, it changes from Bothell Way to the Bothell Everett Highway, and then from there on, it goes out this way. We believe the best choice is probably Bothell Everett Highway subarea plan, because I think most people still associate that roadway with that time of designation, but we've got lots of options.
Has the City Council or Public Works, or is there a consensus on what SR 527 should be called?
Oh, yes, yes. This is all, basically, this is all part of some previous actions the city has taken, and I just didn't talk about it in our initial discussion, but...
So that's already been determined, Bothell Everett Highway is what it will be called?
It has been determined, yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Exactly, yes. And of course, this subarea, of course, is on both the King and Snohomish County areas, and it basically is along the Bothell Way/Bothell Everett Highway corridor. And of course, as we identified, we have a couple of requests for changes here. One, of course, is a city-sponsored request that includes Country Village, which is located right here, around the CB here. And the area that we're looking at is basically highlighted with this red dashed line. The other request, the Jorgen request, is up here, and it's really small. It's like, we're talking about about six tenths of an acre here. That basically, it will address a split zoning designation. I have a little bit more detail here about Country Village. This also shows in a little bit more definition the area that is being considered. And essentially, what the city is going to do is that, as the commission is aware, we have a population deficit in our comprehensive plan. And what that means is that the City of Bothell is not meeting its target population growth numbers. And that is established through what's called the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Act, and they're called multi-county planning policies, and it's called something called Vision 2040. And that's basically where all these things come into position. And within that document, the City of Bothell is identified as a core city, which means we do have to take a certain amount of additional population that our plan does not address. One of the things that the council did when they initiated the 2015 periodic plan and code update was they identified that this area, Country Village and some of the surrounding areas, was a logical place to add a residential component, simply because there's not one there now, and it's a great spot from the standpoint that it's located next to good transportation. It's got a lot of shopping. It's got a lot of amenities that would be very attractive for a residential type of an approach. This is a little bit more detailed aerial photo showing again the Country Village Shopping Center, which is located within this area, and of course, in the red is the area that would be changed. Now, we have a number of things happening here that basically I want to identify to everybody. Of course, this area is designated as CB or Community Business. That is an exclusively retail-type zoning designation. But some of the lands to the south have a little bit different. It's R 4000 OP CB, or even some of them, these about five properties over here in this southeast, southwest corner, I'm sorry, are R 9600. Our proposal is to make this a solid block that would all, basically be RAC, Residential Activity Center, OP, Office Professional, and CB, Community Business. And essentially what that is, that's a mixed-use type of zone that allows either horizontal mixed use or vertical mixed use. An example of vertical mixed use is the facility down here called Six Oats, who's got the Amaro Restaurant and the BECU underneath it, and residential above. So that's kind of an example of vertical mixed use. Horizontal mixed use is one building has one type of use and another building has another type of use. And that's basically, that's pretty simple. And again, as I identified, this is a natural location to locate people. We have great bus service on the Bothell Everett Highway. We have a real close proximity to a lot of shopping. We have the new Safeway development that includes a lot of shops there, as well as, of course, the Country Village itself. Now, we did a preliminary capacity analysis, and that's basically where we kind of put together some numbers. We find out how big the area is, and we believe there has, this area marked in red, has the potential for 600 to 800 people to live in this area if we do the RAC designation at a 35-foot height provision. And that basically gets us a little bit closer to taking care of our current deficit. Doesn't get it off all the way, of course. Finally, within the subarea plan that you have before you, there's some, basically some differences here that we're thinking about doing. We want to assign what's called the Red Barn Special District to this area. And essentially what that would do, that would expand that area north to include the Country Village and some of those properties as well. But we have a little bit of a provision there, because there's some general standards, and then there's some standards that would be applied specifically to the north area, basically the RAC and the 35-foot height, and some standards that would only apply to the south area that talk about some of the provisions that are already there. Primarily, there is a roadway that's supposed to be planned through here. Well, it doesn't make sense to mention that when you're talking about the north area, but it does mention, it makes sense to talk about when you're talking about the south area. Some very simple things like that is basically the proposal that you have before you. So, oh, sorry. So I don't know if the Council Commission would like me to keep going with the Jorgensen request and finish up the Country Village, or if you would like to just start with one or the other.
Why don't you go ahead and complete the Jorgensen request as well, and then we'll pause at that point.
Excellent, thank you. Essentially, the Mr. and Mrs. Jorgensen have submitted a request that would address a split zoning designation on their piece of property. They're basically just south of 232nd, east of 7th Avenue, and west of the Bothell Everett Highway. Their capacity right now is about nine lots. Proposed, 5400D would be about nine lots. And essentially what we have, this is a good diagram. This shows the current zoning boundary, which basically divides the property into two. And that's usually not what we try and do. We try and have our zoning boundaries follow property lines. One of the things I can tell you is that over the years, as we've gotten better mapping techniques, we sometimes find these kind of things. They were inadvertently done, but it's what it is, so we have a chance now to correct that provision. And essentially what this would do is this would assign the 5400D to the entire site, you know, basically, and create a slight expansion of the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, and Bothell Everett Highway subarea to basically include this entire property. This is a really minor thing. This is about seven tenths of an acre on the west side, this 9600, and about six tenths of an acre on the east side. So it's a fairly minor amendment, but it's important to address that. Now, tonight, of course, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have. You can take public testimony. And we do have a motion that we would like to approve, and I've actually taken the one that I've got in my memo. I've kind of combined it here, basically just so you can make just one fell swoop motion. It was basically to adopt the staff findings, conclusions, and recommendations for both the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, Bothell Everett Highway subarea, and the specific findings that you have within the city-sponsored Country Village Plan Amendment Request, as well as the Jorgensen Plan Amendment Request, as Planning Commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations. So I'll stop at that point, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Bruce, are there any other, besides these two parcel requests, are there any other changes, language changes, that you would highlight in the subarea plan that you'd want us to focus on?
The one thing I would ask that you take a kind of a quick peek at would be the area where we've taken the Red Barn Village and split it into the two. Now, it seems to follow a real logical, it just kind of fell into that very logically, and I don't think there's anything that is of any major policy issues. But I just want to make sure that the commission kind of looks at that and says, okay, yeah, we can make sense with this. We understand what the RAC area would be, 35 feet. The area to the south would be the R 4000, and basically continue what we've got now. I just want to make sure that that is something that the commission feels pretty solid on as well.
Okay.
Other than that, most of it is primarily housekeeping and just moving things around to make sense.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission of Mr. Blackburn?
I had one...
Hold, pardon. Go ahead, Commissioner Stahl.
Yeah, I just had one question for clarification.
Yes.
You had said for the rezoning around Country Village, that it would be 600 people? Was that 600 total, or 600 additional after the changes in zoning?
That would be 600 additional.
Thanks.
Bruce Stebbin?
Hey Bruce, have we done a traffic study at all as to, you know, if we're putting 600 to 800 additional vehicles on Bothell Everett Highway or Bothell Way? Have we done any type of a traffic study at all?
Yes, as a matter of fact, one of the major features of this plan update is a very comprehensive traffic modeling study. That basically is being worked on as we speak. We have actually plugged in this area, as well as the Canyon Park subarea, which we're going to talk about next week, into those traffic modeling scenarios to see what happens when we add this type of a population expansion onto the street infrastructure. And that's something that's going to be reported to you when they come back with the transportation element provisions here in two weeks, I believe it is. So the idea behind that is that we have been doing this traffic modeling so far. The analysis indicates that we do not interfere with our corridor level of service. Our corridor level of service is still operate underneath these provisions. And basically, I think that's to be expected, because most of these changes we're talking about have been very small. You know, most of them are, you know, just, you have two or three houses here or there, or something like that. This one is one of the ones that is starting to bigger number. But again, 600 to 800 is still a fairly small number when you look at, from the standpoint, the capacity of the Bothell Everett Highway system, particularly with the new improvements that are going in as we speak.
Right, right. Good, thank you.
Mr. Leach?
Um, let's see. So the 600 to 800 population capacity improvement in this area, what types of, I mean, so that, you get to that number through what types of dwelling units?
Essentially what it is, is we're applying what we call the RAC, Residential Activity Center provisions. And that does not have a cap on the number of dwellings that can be within the site. However, there's always a limitation as to what you can actually physically put there. And what we've done is that we use our numbers that the Snohomish County demographers, I'm sorry, have prepared for us, because we've got some projects that have been developed in the RAC, particularly downtown area, at these heights that gives them a pretty good idea of how to protect the acreage and how many people get into those areas. And that's basically what they're identifying. There's about 600 to 800 now. One of the things we'll do when we kind of complete this initial process with the Planning Commission, we're going to send all these numbers up to Snohomish County, and they're going to rerun their capacity analysis. And that does two things for us. One is it lets us know, make sure our transportation modeling is within the parameters we've set. And the other thing, it makes sure that we do address our population capacity deficit.
Okay. And, I mean, there's no particular code on this, but do we know, I know the owner of the property spoke the last time and was mentioning properties that might be developed that were, you know, significantly less than some of the higher-priced homes that have been being built. So is most of this ownership, are these apartment rentals, or do we know much about what that might look like? Or is that stuff to be figured out later on?
Not yet. And essentially, here's what the RAC allows you, the applicant or a property owner to do. They have a wide range of different development types, household product they can provide there. They can go anywhere from townhouses that are on their own few simple lots, to multifamily buildings, basically where they're stacked units, to all of those type of facilities. Now, one of the things here is that we're recommending a 35-foot height limitation for a couple of reasons. One is it does give us a pretty good feel for how many people we're talking about, so we don't overdo it, like a 65-foot height provision might do. As well as, of course, it gives us a really good predictable number for what we think we can see for development out here. Now, here's one of the true isms about this stuff. In our plan capacity, we may have 600 or 800 people that can be here. We never get there. Usually, particularly in many years, this identifies the plan capacity that we do, that we have to provide for underneath our obligations underneath the Growth Management Act. But it may be 20, 35, before we actually get the last unit built on this piece of property. And that's where some of the times we get really, kind of get embroiled into this, oh, this number, oh, this scary, 800 more people, and this, a little bit nervous about it. It will be retired and on the beach before this happens early. Some of us will be on the beach. But the idea is that this just is a capacity number. Very rarely do we see this number in the real world.
Okay. I'm going to have a couple additional questions, but I'll just hold them until later.
Okay.
Thanks.
Bruce, you have, there's language, several places in the packet that talks about change of the 100-foot setback to 30 feet. Does that pertain only to these particular parcels, or wider inside the subarea?
It's a little bit wider within the subarea. And let me go to another... Within the Country Village subarea, there were a number of locations where a 100-foot building setback was applied, particularly around, you know, Safeway's a good example, Country Village is one, and some of the other areas. And that was due primarily to the fact that most of these areas over here had a much lesser zoning designation. We had a lot of areas that were, and this is in 1994, 1996, when this plan was first adopted, we had a lot of areas that were R 40,000, which is one unit per acre. And there was a real strong desire to create a buffer separation between the more intense Country Village-type development and that almost pastoral R 40,000, one house per acre kind of approach. What we have learned in the preceding, in the past 20 years, is that we don't need to have that 100-foot buffer anymore, primarily because these areas to the west, the residential areas, have changed. Now, along 3rd Avenue, which is the primary thing that we're talking about here, is that there's subdivisions going in. Now, we have 9600 square foot lots. We have a lot of new, a non-new residential occurring there. And it's an R 96 designation, so it's a much lesser area to be protected, if you will. That's also true along some of the areas to the east and to the south as well. We've got a lot of changes going on there. One of the big things that we've done, of course, is that the Safeway project was a really important one, because that was the first development we did underneath the Red Barn Special District. And we crafted this really special buffer, a 30-foot buffer, that has proven to be really, really effective. Some might say too effective. But that buffer is so dense and so protective that that 100-foot building setback probably is not necessary anymore. So that's basically where that is coming to. We're just trying to tend to make a full circle here and recognize that areas around this subarea have changed substantially, and that 100-foot buffer probably doesn't serve a purpose anymore.
So the 30-foot buffer that you're proposing would extend from Safeway, the Safeway project north along the highway to include down this new parcel?
It would.
Is that kind of part of the overall vision for that part of the subarea, which is this kind of walkable, logical hub, if you will, that folks would live in what could, what is now Country Village, but could conceivably walk to Safeway if they wanted to?
Partly. But it's also just purely an idea behind keeping these two different uses separate. It's basically, it's a buffer, if you would. It says, okay, this is a pretty intense area over here. This is single-family. We're going to create a very dense buffer between those two, so that the folks on the west side, if you will, won't have a real fear about some tall building, although the building heights are proposed to be the same, would be right next to their backyard. That's basically the purpose behind the buffer. And it's been very successful behind the Safeway. It's a really effective buffer.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions from up here, maybe this is a good breakpoint, and will allow the, any members of the public that would like to come and speak to us, they are more than welcome to do so. Are there any folks in the room who would like to, yes, sir, come forward and state your name and address for the record, if you will, and if you keep your comments to three minutes, we sure would appreciate it.
Mike Challenger, 21015 930 Southeast Bothell, just west of Thrashers Corner. Bruce mentioned traffic. It seems to me that we have a tendency to focus on traffic in immediate area, but living in this area and driving the Bothell Everett Highway and 228th, our city is being inundated by traffic from the intense building that Snohomish County is allowing, certainly north of 180th. It all seems to me, it's all funneling down into Bothell. And there are times when I go on my way to Redmond, I get as far as Safeway, and it's a parking lot from there into Bothell. So I'm wondering how closely, what close attention we pay to the traffic issues caused by development outside the city. I know they're cognizant of it, but it, to me, it's becoming a really serious issue. It may not be relevant to this discussion, but it certainly impinges on it to some extent. And also, I'm totally unfamiliar with the term "red barn." Can you explain, Bruce, what the red barn is? I don't know of a red barn. There may have been at some point, but I don't recall it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, essentially what had happened was that there was an old barn just basically where the Grease Monkey and the McGee Dental Office was. And that was the gist of creating this architectural thing. And if you look at those two facilities, you're going to see some very interesting architectural elements that were reflective of that red barn. It had to be removed because it had structural issues. I mean, that's basically why they had to remove it. Otherwise, they would have maybe tried to do an adaptive reuse of the structure. But that's basically where it comes, the old red barn, which ended up being white, but it was red at wind time.
I do think that the citizen makes a good point that, and that is both outside of Bothell, as well as in our own development, inside the city, is producing a considerable amount of new traffic that's going onto our roads. We have seen improvement, significant project between 240th and 228th take place, which I think is providing some real relief there. But as what always happens, is then it moves. And that traffic from 240th south into the main, you know, downtown part of Bothell is just brutal, as you know, in the morning and evening. Is there any hope that we have for our citizens as they struggle with that, as all of us do, for road improvements there? Any plans on that?
There is some planned improvements for those, basically from the south of the county line down into the city of Bothell's main area, but not a lot of change. Part of the concept behind the downtown plan was to have that really important boulevard go only a certain dimension, a distance, and then stop to create this uniqueness for the downtown area. From there on out, the idea was to be to ride a three-lane section or a five-lane section, whatever happens to be necessary. In fact, that's one of the things that traffic modeling is doing, is trying to identify what kind of capacities we have to have in our road system. But it's one of those items that we do have that issue, as has been pointed out. You go away, say you've got a new improvement, you move the bottleneck just a little bit down further down the road. One of the issues that we are facing here with part of the Growth Management Act is that we do have mandatory growth targets that we have to meet. And the hope is, by placing residential development such as this in near proximity to some of our major employment centers, I know downtown is just trying to get there, but it's eventually going to be a pretty good employment center. We have the Canyon Park Business Center. It's just up the road, north from this area, that is a significant employment center. The idea is that you can keep people from having to drive so far. And that's one of the real keys behind, you know, this walkable communities. We hear about that kind of thing. We want to have the ability to have people get out of their car to get to their work, as long as it's not too terribly far. But there's a lot of, it's a really complex factor there. And one of the things I can tell you is that traffic modeling does look at areas outside the city. They don't just, you know, plug it from one somewhere to, they actually go into what they call TAS, Traffic Modeling Zones. And essentially what it is, is they go far beyond the confines of the city, just to get a feel for how that is going to work out. They use a lot of data from Puget Sound Regional Council Governments, as a matter of fact, that identifies what some of these growth targets are, and that's when they plug it in. But there's no doubt about it. It's a very serious issue to be able to meet the capacity we have for people to get to where they need to go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a good point, that there's growth that occurs outside the city limits of Bothell, that we just have a limited amount of influence on what takes place, whether it's permitted construction, or road construction on 405, or road construction on 520 even, that is pushing traffic that might normally go on the 520 floating bridge and is actually being routed through Bothell now. So there's just so many different factors that drive traffic to our city. But I do agree with the overall direction that we're headed, which is to have these pockets of residents, as well as retail together. So this new hub that took a Safeway that was in downtown Bothell and moved it out, so there's some traffic that no longer would be going to Safeway downtown. If you want to go to Safeway now, you're going there instead. So there's that as well. So... Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
I'll try and keep it to three minutes. My name is John Stone. First name is Bruce. I've lived in 23110 7th Avenue Southeast for 35... I've lived in 23110 Seventh Avenue Southeast for 34 years. When I first came here, there was a campground where QFC is, and coming down 405 into Beardsley, that was all pasture land and farming land. So you can see where I'm coming from. I know I'm not going to be able to stop development, but I want to talk about the Jorgensen request. Right now, to get out of our little development, we are pretty much landlocked. Bothell decided, I don't know why, to close off 10th, which was, I don't know, you can't see it, but anyway, 10th used to access Bothell Everett Highway, and we could walk to Country Village. Now, we have to walk up to 228th. It's an extra mile and a half to get there, so we can't do that. The only access that we have right now is on 7th, and going westbound up the hill on 228th, two, turn left on 7th. There's a two-way left turn lane until you just get before 7th Avenue, and it disappears. So there have been dozens of rear-ended accidents because of that. So is there, I'm sure, Bruce, you've got the answer for how we're going to get out of there, but I don't see it. So that's one point. Second, across the street from Jorgensen, there's a new housing development that's been going on for a year with trucks that are not meant for this little tiny street, and they have just destroyed the whole 7th Avenue. It's just crumbling. And they fixed a few potholes. In front of my place, there's a, it's definitely sagging, I guess you would call the street. And so my driveway right at the street has been just pretty much destroyed. So how are we going to, are we going to fix 7th? And are we going to access, how are we going to access this? My request would be, I don't know how long the Jorgens, Jorgensens have had this land, but make it all one classification as R-96, not 54, because we can't get out of our place anyway. Even after we get out onto 228th, there are three lights before you get, well, the third one is actually 527. And you have to wait through at least three cycles per light to get there in the morning. I don't know whose study finds there's not a traffic problem, but in my opinion, there's the big traffic problem. Okay. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Bruce, why don't you, can you bring up the Jorgen, the slide on the Jorgensen property?
I'm just going to put that one slide up. There we go.
So I'm trying to kind of refresh my own memory on the access to this property from 228th. So when I picture 228th from Bothell Everett Highway and you're heading west, is that correct? And you start to climb up the hill?
Yeah.
And then there's a, is it a Kinder Care on the left?
Yeah.
Is that where the, you turn left there, and the access is to the south then from there? Is that, am I correct, or is it further west on up the hill?
It's beyond, it's beyond the Kinder.
Beyond the Kinder Care?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right there.
It's right there.
Got it. Okay. And that, is that currently the only access to the Jorgensen property as well as your property?
Correct.
That's it.
Okay. And? Got it. It no longer, it no longer has access, would that have been where? Is that about where the Applebee's is now, or something?
No, Applebee's is up here.
That's where the, that's where the big rock wall is now, the concrete rock.
Ah, okay, got it, okay.
Right where you start down the hill.
Before you start down, yep, okay. So I guess, you know, the citizens concerned both about traffic access to the property, construction, so construction damage that's occurred, as well as just the other, just the concerns about R-9600 versus R-5400. One question I had, and that is, there are parcels, it looks like adjacent to the Jorgensen property that are already R-5400?
To the east, yes.
To the east?
Yes.
Okay. And is the thinking of staff that we would just keep it consistent with that? Is that part of the, what's behind our staff's recommendation of R-5400?
Precisely, yes, yes. The idea would be to relocate that line a little bit to the west, just to include the entire par, property as one zoning designation.
Chris McGastner.
Is there, is there a new road? Is 232nd being rerouted through that new plaid onto Bothell? I've seen, I don't know, is that going to be open or not?
Exactly, I had that question as well. I'm seeing that new construction go on there.
I got, I've got to go and take a look, another look at the maps. I just can't remember exactly how it routes through there. I know that they've got some solutions to that in some of the planning, and one of the provisions that they've talked about is, is one of the things is trying to make the Bothell Everett Highway flow better north-south, so we don't have as quite as bad a backups in some of our other major intersections. But I just can't remember how this, this works out. I believe the concept, and I'm going to go from memory, because it's been a while, was that the city was wanting people to go up to 220th and use that as the primary movement point, instead of come out off of here. And one of the concerns with that 10th Avenue, I recall some of the transportation engineers speaking to this, was that it was not a very safe traffic movement. They did not like the way it came in and kind of had this little bit of a funny elevation, and then you had this movement, and then they were really worried about how that was going to work with the new improvements they were doing out there. So I know that that was a very major part of when they did the design work for this, well, basically the Bothell Everett Highway improvements that are going on now. But I can, I can get the detailed plans and show you how that's all going to be, if you so desire.
Okay.
Or we can make sure, if the people can give me their name, and I can get that stuff to them as well.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, did you want us?
I do.
Please. Your name and address?
Teri Ann Heasley. I live at 23219 Seventh Avenue Southeast. I've lived there about 28 years.
What was the last name again, Teri?
Heasley, H-E-A-S-L-E-Y. I'm, my property record is under Maples, M-A-P-L-E-S. I've recently been married.
All right.
Okay, so I'm partially wanting to reiterate what my neighbor Bruce Johnstone has talked about in the traffic. One of the difficulties in the routing the traffic that is heading north on Bothell Everett Highway and west up 228th, while that increase in the two left turn lanes there has given more capacity for the left turns, it's parked at the first light. All that traffic doesn't go through, and that intersection is blocked by those left-hand turners. And then the people who are going south on Bothell Everett Highway have, that traffic backs up because there's nowhere to go.
Let me see if I'm, I don't mean to interrupt you, Teri, but I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're talking about as you're heading east on 228th and are going to turn left north on the, on the Bothell Everett Highway? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I, I'm glad you asked for that clarification.
Take me, which direction are we headed?
Okay.
To start with.
So I'm coming from Country Village up Bothell Everett Highway to 228th. That would be north.
From Country Village, you're heading north?
Okay.
Up the Bothell Everett Highway?
And I need to go left or west up 228th to get to my property, because there's no other way to get there. And that left-hand turn lane, while there's two, there is no place for the traffic to go when it turns left. So I've seen it continually block that intersection. The reason I know that is I come home off 405. I turn south, and I would just want to make a right-hand turn on 228th. I can't, because all those left-hand turners block the entire intersection, and no one moves.
Yeah.
So there needs to be some kind of remediation or something there, some, maybe some patrol, something, please don't block the intersection. And I will reiterate that getting, turning then on to 7th, as you're coming up 228th, is very dicey. Trying to keep one eye on your rearview mirror so you don't get rear-ended while you're watching the oncoming traffic. And...
Is there a left turn lane there?
No, there is not. And my concern is not that people don't pay attention. My concern is that by the point that people have reached that point, they've been stopped and waiting for probably 20 minutes just to get to that point up the hill, and another left-hand turner does not receive dwell.
Yeah.
And not that people aren't, it's just that people get irritated. My other concern is, in an effort to really make the community walkable, I would love to see pedestrian access off of 232nd onto Bothell Everett Highway. That's all been completely blocked. If I want to walk to Country Village, I actually have to climb the blockade, which I've done on some occasions, but it's not my preferred method of travel. Okay, that's all I have to say.
First of all, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'll tell you another part of that intersection at 228th and Bothell Everett Highway that I'm certainly aware of, and that is the situation I described, and I'm sure you experienced it living where you live, which is as you come east on 228th and come to the Bothell Everett Highway and are attempting to make a left turn, you're heading towards 405, or you're going to continue on north, that backs up, and it becomes a significant problem. I've, I've spoken with several folks on our city manager's staff, and there is hope, and Bruce, I don't know if you have any update for us there, but that is going to be reworked. There is money to rework the whole intersection there, and the problems are well documented. I just wanted you to know that. I don't know if we have a particular timeline, and whether we have funding right now to make those changes, and when exactly that's going to happen, but that whole intersection needs to be reworked. So I just wanted you to know that. Your other point about pedestrian access to the highway from where you are, I think is a terrific one. It's a real hot button, I think, with all of us here, which is to, we want to make, and I think it fits into kind of our overall transportation strategy, which is we want to give folks options, whether they, if they want to get in their car, okay, but there's, there's going to be, you know, some challenges, but, but having bike lanes, safe sidewalks, just options for our citizens to use, that's, I just think throughout our entire city, it's very important. But is there anything, Bruce, that you could, you could provide us with any kind of update on just the intersection at 228th, since that is a part of the sub area as well?
It is, and, and, you know, one of the things we are doing is that, I haven't had a briefing in the last four or five months on this particular intersection, but I do know that our transportation manager, he's got these big monitors on his wall, and he's always got that intersection pulled up. It seems like he's always looking at that one, coming up with strategies. I know they've got a strategy to make it improved. That's one of those things, situations where we have a mega intersection. I mean, we've got eight lanes of traffic in that intersection trying to make it move. And the problem is not necessarily the intersection, but it's those ancillary places, and trying to coordinate the traffic signals between those. And I know that's one of the major things they've been trying to work out. And I know everybody says, well, just make them all synchronous. It's really hard to do that, with all the different movements they've got going on, so. But I don't, I can get a fresher update on what's going on up there, certainly, and bring it back to the commission, or the people as well.
Yeah, I think an update on just, since it's as part of the sub area review?
Yes.
That would, if we're going to do a second review on it, let's have that be included. And...
And I've got a big asterisk by the pedestrian access to the Bothell Everett Highway from 232nd, there should be, that should be there.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, make it a policy.
So thanks to all of you who, yes, sir, please come forward.
I'm Jim Jorgensen, 724 232nd Street Southeast. I just wanted to, it's my understanding that the subdivision that's going in across the street from us will have an access for southbound only approximately in this area. And Bruce, you said you didn't know for sure about it, but I know that that's an integral part of what, so there will be a road that goes approximately from here to here. And that may also be a way that we don't have to drive all the way down and around here to go to downtown Bothell. We could go through there. And is it, it's also my understanding that the developer of this property, when it is finished, is to establish a 20-foot wide, which is only currently about 18 feet wide, and is real torn up. By the way, I've been there 28 years as well. A 20-foot wide new restored good access on 7th Avenue from 232nd down. So, and it's also my understanding from talking to the project, the city of Bothell oversight person, that we've, we've had a lot of the big trucks come in, the flatbeds bringing the heavy-duty, you know, the backhoes, you know, on tracks and stuff, and it has affected 7th Avenue for sure. But he told, and he's told the orange across the street, as well as myself, that when this project is being built, there is to be no construction traffic here. Their construction traffic is to use that entrance down there, and that we're to report if we see construction there. So 232nd is in pretty decent shape. 7th Avenue, if it's restored afterwards, it's going to be better than it was to start with. So just wanted to bring up those points.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? If you're going to speak, come forward. We have, it's Bruce Johnson?
Correct, Bruce Johnstone. I'm hoping that I can be corrected, but as I understand it, that entrance for that new development that accesses the Bothell Everett Highway will be a right turn only.
Oh, yeah.
So how do you get to anywhere else you want to go? So that's my question.
So I mean, your question is if they don't want to turn right, they want to turn left, but they...
Right, they still have to go 7th Avenue.
Or they turn right and do a U-turn.
Make a U-turn.
Yeah.
And cause another accident. Okay. Two more questions, I forgot what they are.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff at this point? Okay, hearing none. So the way that the language has been put in front of us was that we were presented with two potential motions in the PAC that we received. One motion for specifically the Country Village-sponsored plan, and then a second motion for the Jorgensen Plan Amendment, as well as Planning Commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations. Bruce, in his presentation, actually gave us a motion that kind of combined the two.
Remind them all, but you can separate them if you want.
So I guess I'd like to hear from the folks on the panel here, one thought, one way or the other, whether we want to separate these motions out, or we want to combine them.
I'd combine them and move on.
Commissioner Bley?
I'd like to separate them out, because I just, I guess I feel the first one, the first motion is a significant one of the city of Bothell, and there's a couple commissioners out here tonight, I'd like to hear what they have to say about, about that, about that possible rezone, and I don't know, there's a lot of other things to factor in. I know we have, I guess I haven't really discussed tonight, and there's a lot of businesses, like I said the last meeting, I think it's the commercial gem of Bothell, and I don't, I think we have to be real careful with what we do to it. I think changes or improvements also could drive out a lot of businesses that are already there, and I know that maybe those businesses don't actually own the property, but they are, you know, a part of the business community of Bothell right now, and it'd be nice to hear from some of them what they have to say. I don't know, just, it seems like a lot, and I'd like to hear from some of the other commissioners as well, but I'd be, so I'd be willing to break them up tonight. But I, but I'd be, so I'd be willing to, to break them up tonight.
Mr. Stedman?
Uh, I'm all set to move forward with both of them together. This is, this is, this is not our first, our first meeting to discuss this and we've had, in my opinion, we've had an awful lot of, of, uh, community input and conversations amongst ourselves as well.
Mr. Stahl?
Yeah, I'm, I, I had one question on, uh, on one of the pages, uh, in CV-10 in the green section, it looked like there was incomplete sentence and I was just very curious how that sentence would end. It's at the, uh, CV-10 at the top at the end of the first paragraph, uh, that, that last sentence, "The Country Village Shopping Center will have to blank."
Oh, I think that's just a note that got transferred to the next page. Ha! That's funny. We've been trying to do this track changes thing and sometimes it doesn't always necessarily take all the old X, X out the old things. I believe what, oh, I see. I think, I know, I think I remember what that, I believe what I was trying, I was trying to capture some of the discussion we had from the Loveless family that said, look, they do need some additional, uh, residential component to help them with their, their facility because they did identify that there was some concerns with continuing the Country Village Center, uh, you know, as just by itself as a retail facility by itself. I believe that was what he said in the last meeting. I was trying to capture that and then I must have taken out part of it, but I did out the whole thing. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that, that's fine. I was just curious how it, I, I mean, I could kind of guess from the context. That, that's, I, I'm, we've had multiple reviews on it. I'm, I feel ready to go ahead and, and, and take a motion and take a vote on it.
So I'll just add my comments. So I am as well. On the subject of Country Village, the current CB designation would not preclude changes of occurring even anyway. I mean, there could, the, the owner could, um, make all kinds of changes that could change the character of that property as it is, as, without a zoning change. What we're really talking about is adding the possibility of residence, um, and some, some really cool additional innovation that could occur. So, uh, for that reason, I'm in, I'm in favor of the, of the motion for Country Village. Uh, the Jorgensen property, and there've been, um, really good comments made, uh, this evening with regards to the concerns to traffic, um, any construction damage that's occurring is, is well-taken and, and certainly fits in terms of my concerns, not only for that part of our city, but citywide. And, uh, I guess I'd want to assure the citizens that, um, I'm very committed to both transportation options, thorough transportation studies being done. And so just in the fa, in the change of this from 9600 to 5400 was, is not going to change that. Uh, there are adjacent parcels to the Jorgensen parcel that are already at 5400. So I believe that, um, this change, um, is appropriate. So Bruce, go ahead and, um, if you will, go ahead and put your slide back up there with that combined motion. And if one of the...
Oh, shoot.
If someone wa, if one of the planning commissioners would, uh, produce that motion, we'll take a vote on it.
I move to adopt the staff findings, conclusions, and recommendation for the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, Bothell Everett Subarea, and the specific findings for the city-sponsored Country Village Plan and Code Amendment, as well as the Jorgensen Plan and Code Amendment request as planning commission, uh, findings, conclusions, and recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously?
What I'll do in the interim is I'll get some of the data on how those systems were established and through the, both the development that was out there as well as some of the stuff that they're working on now. And I'll get that somehow. If somebody would be willing to contact me, I can get that sent out to them.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. I'll do that.
So at this point, let's move forward in our agenda to the other two sub areas. This would be the Fitzgerald 35th Southeast Subarea Plan, um, and the Canyon Creek 39th Southeast Subarea Plan. And in this case, it's the initial review of both.
Yes, this involves the Canyon Creek. I'm going to talk about Canyon Creek 39th Southeast Subarea first. Uh, this is a sub area of about 924 acres, 1.5 square miles. It's a pretty good sized one. And it includes both City of Bothell lands, those within the corporate limits of the City of Bothell, as well as some areas within unincorporated Snoomish County. In fact, probably most of it is unincorporated Snoomish County. Uh, the uses within this sub area are pretty simple. They're all detached, single-family residential. There's really nothing unusual here, any kind of mixed use or anything like that. There's a couple of schools and there's a major Snoomish County Public Utility District Transportation, uh, sorry, Distribution Station within this area. This subject was, this, uh, sub area was subject to a pretty significant change in 2014 Planning Code Amendments. The council adopted an ordinance, it was 2163 on November 18th of 2014, that basically made some changes to the low-impact development standards within this sub area. That was the primary focus of this, that particular amendment process. There was no desire to change any of the underlying zoning provisions or any of the densities or anything like that when the council reviewed that. And I think that's true today as well because we do have some areas that can be, um, covered from the standpoint of our, uh, basically to meet our capacity analysis. So we propose that the council, the commission, go ahead and close their deliberations on this one and pass this forward as a recommendation because it's been so recently reviewed by the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'm just going to go into Fitzgerald if that's all right.
Please do.
Fitzgerald 35th Southeast Subarea, very similar to Canyon Creek. It's basically just south of this Canyon Creek, uh, sub area. And essentially this is about 590 acres, you know, like a little less than a half of what, 1.9 square miles. And it's primarily large parcel, single-family residential. There's a couple of churches within this sub area and a fairly good-sized multifamily residential development as well. Uh, there's no schools, there's no parks within it. And this area has got a little bit more definition because it has a lot of large in scope, um, and highly functioning critical areas, basically wetlands, streams, things like that, that are subject to a series of mandatory low-impact development practices, you know, including a certain amount of areas the site has to be maintained in forest. You've had some wildlife corridors that go through this area, as well as, of course, the council recently identified the mandatory use of the latest Department of Ecology Surface Water Manual within the, um, those ordinance that they just passed on November 18th. We envision a very similar situation here that there's really not a lot to be looked at here except for some of the minor, minor housekeeping provisions that we've been doing throughout this thing. And we also recommend a motion for you to close your deliberations on this sub area and adopt the staff proposal as a planning commission recommendation. So that does it. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff of either of these two sub area reviews? Mr. McAsno?
Yeah, on the Canyon, on the Canyon Creek, that, that portion that's north, it's in the unincorporated Snoomish County, when, um, those, those zoning, the 7200 and the 9600, forgive me if I've, if I've, uh, forgot, but did we, did this, when, when we were looking at annexations, did we do these, these, uh, uh, preliminary zoning for, for the planning, for this planning area?
Yes, we did. Actually, we, that was an effort we went through in 2010 that basically set the zoning for those areas in preparation for the potential annexation.
And I'll just ask this question again, that are, the 7200, um, we have shown on there, uh, why don't we, why don't we call it R-4? Or why don't we, I, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me ask you this question. The 7200 that we have shown, how well does it match with R-7200? I guess the question I was getting, R-7200 matches the underlying stuff under the 7200 that's there now?
For Snoomish County?
For Snoomish County?
Yeah.
Those lots that are created out there along 39th and stuff. So we're putting a zoning on them that shows 7200. Is that realistic?
Basically what it does is it matches the name of the Snoomish County designation that is being applied to those areas. Does not match what their provisions are.
That's fine.
Their provisions are significantly different.
I just, I just wanted to bring, I just wanted to bring that up again. I didn't want anybody to understand that what we're doing, and I know it's in the unincorporated, so I don't want to be, I don't want to bring this up, but it, the two are not the same.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Stedman?
You just confused me. Can you, can you show me which, which areas are not, uh, in the, within the city limits?
The city limit line follows about 35th Avenue generally. So this area that is the eastern 60-some-odd percent of this area is in unincorporated Snoomish County. So all this area here that we, city has proposed to assign an R-7200 designation matches the same name as Snoomish County has, but it is not the same development style.
Well, is the eastern bor, uh, border of that sub area, is that 45th?
Uh, yes, this is 45th and then when it gets a little bit, uh, sorry, this is 45th and then when it gets a little bit north there at 212th, it switches over about a block and a half.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we, that's confusing, isn't it? The, to know exactly where the city limits of Bothell actually are.
Yeah, it's actually right here. This, of course, is the urban growth boundary as well. So from here it's urban, from here it's rural resource lands.
Any other questions? I think we're ready to move on these two motions. So if you look at, now just give this to the permission, we've got on the second page of Bruce's memo to us, two motions that he's articulated. Is there any discussion around those motions or are we ready to vote on them as written?
I would propose that we vote on those as written and if I had that in front of me, I would.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Fortunately, fortunately, we do. I would make a motion.
The memo's not in the usual spot. Actually, he's got them on the slides so he can...
So at this time, I'd like to move to close deliberations on the 39th Subarea and adopt the staff proposals as the planning commission's recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So let's look at the other motion.
And at this time, um, I'd like to, um...
Actually, do you have that in front of you as well?
I don't, but I was just going to...
Oh, there you go.
Just to put the words, I'd like to move to close deliberations on the 35th, uh, Fitzgerald 35th Southeast Subarea and adopt the staff proposal as the planning commission's recommendation.
Second?
All opposed? Oh, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This concludes the public hearing part of our agenda. We have no study session this evening, no old business. I see the hearing examiner's reports from staff. The only comment I'd have for there is just if you could give feedback to Mr. Galt that we've had a new mayor for a year. Uh, just, um, Josh Freed is our mayor and let's just make that change there.
I'll let him know next time I see him.
Yeah. I have no, I, I thought it was humorous that, uh, that Mr. Galt is, one of his hearing activities concerned a cat named Willie, but I'll stay out of what was behind that particular need for a hearing.
Mr. Galt is not only thorough and accurate, he has a sense of humor sometimes.
Yeah. But I don't have any other comments or questions on the hearing examiner's report. Are there any others? None. Hearing, seeing none. Any reports from members? The only thing I'd comment before we adjourn is next week's calendar. We do have a meeting next Wednesday, the 21st. We will review the land use element.
And if, and if I may?
Yes.
We have a slight change to that.
Oh, please.
The land use element is going to go to the 28th of January.
Okay.
So on 21st, we're going to do Canyon Park Subarea, which is another one of these big ones.
Yep.
And on the 20th, we're going to do, um, land use and transportation in one fell swoop. So it should be a very lively discussion.
Okay.